Guys want to approach podium, that way our recording system picks you up. And if you have a floor.
My name is Jim Rochford and I'm the attorney for Joe Walters and his company. And my son is an attorney at our law firm. And actually, just in terms of introduction, we first met Joe Walters when Nick was in high school at Peoria Notre Dame. And Joe was the football coach at Notre Dame High School. And he kept trying to recruit Nick to go out for football. And Nick was on the varsity basketball team from his freshman year and didn't want to take a chance of getting hurt. But Joe was a pretty good salesman on that effort. So, and he was a good teacher as well. And so we appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak to you and, you know, appreciate the courtesy of this opportunity. Basically, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Joe's company and specifically talk about his business in Morton at a start. He's done quite a few jobs, over forty-five jobs in the Morton area with his company. And the first time that he received notice of any complaint was when this came to his attention on following the decision that was made by the Greater Peoria Sanitary District. And he had not really had any complaints or anything that had been brought to his attention about the jobs over the course of time. And in the Greater Peoria Sanitary District, there were actually thirteen different jobs that were cited in their final decision on his license over there. And of those thirteen, six of them actually had nothing to do with work performed by Joe's company in terms of any problematic work on the particular job. Two of them actually were way over a year and a half ago before, and his license had been renewed well after those two jobs had been completed. And there'd been no complaints or any allegations on that. Then there were two other jobs that actually the sanitary district had problems or whatever with the main sewer line, and that those were the problems on those. And so now we're up to ten of the thirteen jobs. Of the remaining three, one of them actually was not finished until after they had indicated to Mr. Walters that his license was not going to be renewed. And so from a relevance perspective, that really isn't something that could be used. And then of the remaining two, both of those jobs, the customers were extremely happy and pleased with the quality of work performed by Joe Walters' company. And so, you know, the thing is, is that fully understand, in Morton, you know, we lived over in this area for nine years. We, I really still think the Pumpkin Festival is the best small-town festival of any of them in central Illinois. And we're regular attenders at that. Been in the parade numerous times. And, you know, fully intend to be at the parade and the Pumpkin Festival again this year. You know, the thing about, you know, Joe's company and, you know, the work that he's done, you know, they've been in business for some time and really do have a good quality of work product. They don't have, there's, the case in Peoria that is going on was challenged. And so that case really is not a case that is considered precedential in terms of any decision being made, meaning that no court has addressed that. We did file, there's a lawsuit pending that is addressing that and that that will be heard, but it's just very preliminary right now at a stage. So, no discovery or depositions have even taken place yet on that. And so in the legal circles, there's a thing called arbitrary and capricious. And if a community makes a decision that is considered arbitrary and capricious, that's not considered to be well-based in terms of the facts of jobs. And with no jobs have been performed, with over forty-five jobs being worked on the last two years in this area by Joe's company, that decision of kind of putting the eggs in the basket of the sanitary district, you know, decision, really is what we call arbitrary and capricious. And that's really, you know, part of our pending lawsuit against the Greater Peoria Sanitary District. And so, you know, in the end, I'd say that if the village has specific jobs or complaints, those haven't been brought to the attention of Joe. And if they were, they would address them. And again, the thirteen ones that were in the decision or whatever that was referred to in the written document that we received from Morton, those, I addressed all of them. And really, we don't feel that any of those thirteen are going to be a problem in the legal system in terms of having a court. And, you know, that, there will be a decision made on that. And, you know, if I'm wrong on that and a decision is made that's adverse to that, well then that's something that's very different. But that's not the case of the facts that we have right now. And so, you know, I think that in essence, Morton, which I think is a great community, I think you've got great leadership. I think it's, you know, one of the best small communities in the greater central Illinois area. I can't see why you would want to buy into having a lawsuit filed. And obviously, we're not looking to sue Morton, but if Morton's going to rely on the sanitary district in Peoria, we have already filed a suit against them, then my client is definitely going to do it. I'm not saying that to be threatening because I do have great respect for Morton and I think it's one of the best communities. And I started the Key Club at Morton High School. And it's probably the best key club, which is sponsored by Kiwanis. It's probably the best key club in central Illinois and has produced many leaders on the district level in the Kiwanis world, which is what sponsors Key Club. And so I really think there's a lot of great people here. I think a lot of good things that go on in Morton. And I think it's very strong leadership that has obviously resulted in that being why you're such a great community. But at the same time, I would say that, you know, if there's a mistake or a problem that's been done by Joe Walters' company in Morton, that would be another thing. But that's not what has been presented at this point and you're just to rely on the other. And I think that all thirteen of those cases, we're not going to make a problem in distinguishing that in a court. And there has been no ruling by any court at all on this. So it strictly is a administrative level decision, which was really made by one person and in Peoria in the sanitary district. And, you know, that was challenged immediately. And it will be resolved, you know, at a point in the court system. But, you know, that hasn't happened. And so we think it's really premature to have anyone kind of try to hang their hat on a decision that really hasn't been made other than by one person. And I'm happy to take any questions. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to come here and appear before you tonight. And again, I have nothing but the greatest respect for the Morton community. And that's why we loved our nine years of being over here and going to church over here and being very active in the community during that nine years.
Just from a steering for the board, you don't often have hearings where you're the hearing officer. So if any of you have questions for Mr. Rochford or Mr. Rochford, and Mr. Rochford's here, now's your opportunity to do that in the absence of questions from the board. You would have the opportunity to deliberate and ultimately our code requires you to adopt a written decision. It's to be written within ten days of the day of the hearing. So tonight, you're going to need to do that unless you want to hold a special meeting. So if you have questions for the appellant, now's your opportunity. Also Todd and Kevin from Wastewater are here as well on behalf of the department.
Any questions?
Two quick questions, and maybe you can or can't answer. Who is the one person in GPSD that they did?
The executive director. And he is a lawyer, but he's been practicing law for some time. And since he took the job of the sanitary district.
Yeah. Also, the two cases of the thirteen you mentioned, you said that the customers were very happy with the work.
Yeah.
And the problem was on GPSD's side of those, or what was the?
No. You know, frankly, I'm not sure what the basis of allegation, but we had contact with them ourselves even. And they were very happy with their job at the end of their job.
And just to clarify, just your question, there was two properties that were, the customers were like that. And there was two properties where it involved the main lines, two separate ones.
Yeah, two sets of two.
And I guess the point I was going to make is, you know, there's cases, it could be possible that the customers are very happy with the service, but the service was, you know, against, you know, the GPSD's regulations. You know, maybe something was done that was, you know, against GPSD's regulations. It may have made the customer very happy, but GPSD not very happy.
Yeah, there's been nothing that's.
Which is, I wondered.
Yeah. There's nothing that would support that statement you just made from the sanitary district. So, you know, in other words, I really, I think what happened is they kind of took everything they possibly could, they kind of threw it once they saw that it was being challenged. And, you know, those two customers, I mean, there, there's no allegation that something was done improperly or outside of what's within the law in terms of those two jobs. At one point, I think maybe the customers early on in the job might have, you know, had a complaint. I don't know that for certain. But clearly, at the end of the job, they were happy because we had contacted them at the end of the job. And there was nothing ever brought in terms of a complaint by the Greater Peoria Sanitary District while that job was ongoing. It was just, you know, so in other words, we don't have any allegation of what would have been the impropriety of any on those jobs. And, you know, so, you know, it's just like, you know, and you might say, well, how does that happen? Well, how do you have six of the thirteen jobs that are laid out not even have work performed that was complained about at all by, you know, my client? And that it was really, you know, totally unrelated to that? And that, you know, so you might say, well, how does that happen? Well, you know, when you're dealing in an administrative, you know, agency, you know, things happen. And, you know, maybe, maybe somebody doesn't like somebody or whatever. I have no idea of the motivation. But, you know, in terms of the allegations and the actual complaints about the quality of work, there really isn't anything that we're concerned about in terms of ultimately having an independent party in the form of a judge ruling favorably towards my client.
So what's the status of your case? You said there's been no deposition, no testimony or whatever.
Yeah.
So what's the status?
Yeah, it's early on. I mean, you know, so.
Have you actually filed one in courthouse?
They filed the lawsuit. We filed a response to it.
We filed a lawsuit and they filed to move it to federal court and have it moved back to state court.
Yeah.
And so it's early on in litigation, just the non-renewal just happened on May ninth of this year. And so we had to file a lawsuit, been a critical phase of that decision.
And how long do you think it's going to take for there to be judgment?
Kind of depends on how many depositions end up being scheduled. I would say we want it to move as fast as possible, actually. And so we would be hopeful to try to get it done, if we could, by the end of the calendar year. But we don't necessarily control that because the other side can say they want to take more depositions than we feel we need to take to, you know, make our case. And in a lawsuit, mostly you're probably familiar, I think, with discovery. I mean, once you file a lawsuit and kind of get through the preliminary motions, then you have discovery, which are depositions where under oath, you can ask questions of the parties involved. And so, you know, we would, you know, provide, you know, who we would plan on using as our witnesses. And the other side would have to do the same and then we could depose them before that happens. Would it be possible to get that to happen? I mean, we're going to make it a high priority on our end, but we don't necessarily control the other side. The other side actually filed the motion to remove the case to federal court. And then we were able to get an agreement to keep it in state court because we felt it could move faster in state court than federal court. Not that, I mean, I do lots of cases in federal court and have no problem with that. But I think this case would probably move quicker in state court. And that was, that's our role is to get it done as quickly as we can.
Does the outcome, the ruling, in your favor, does that overturn the denial of the license of the Peoria Sanitation District?
Yes, it would. Because that's really what the base of the lawsuit is. I mean, we're not, you know, seeking damages even, you know, it's, you know, overturning the decision that we don't think was proper. And that we, you know, arbitrary and capricious is the legal words of art that are used in claiming that the decision was made in an arbitrary and capricious manner. And there's lots of case law to support that as a basis to file lawsuit against a municipality. And that's what we're doing.
And they'll have the ability to appeal again, or is that the final decision?
No, the lawsuit is the appeal. I mean.
No, no, no. If they, if the decision is in your favor, it's Peoria Sanitation District, have the ability to come back and say, no, we want an appeal on this.
Yeah, they would, yeah. I mean, we.
So how long, could this get hauled out for how long?
Well, if that were to happen, the license would more than likely be active.
Okay.
While the appeal is pending. And then once the appeal ended, then that would be the way.
So our ability to, in your opinion, to wait to see how this is resolved before we can decide on issuing, you believe that that is outside of normal regulations on your end? You think that we should decide outside of what the Peoria Sanitation District is doing?
Yeah, I think that there's been enough work done by our client in this community and without having any complaints that have been, you know, brought to his attention. I think that's the basis. And, you know, I mean, and just to answer your question specifically, if there would be an adverse decision made from what I've said that we think is likely to happen, then at that point, if Morton then said, okay, based on there being an independent party being the court that has ruled favorably for the Greater Peoria Sanitary District, then I think it would be within your purview to, you know, put your eggs in that basket. I just think it's improper now. And really, we understand that our disagreement is with the sanitary district, it's not with Morton. And, you know, so that's why, I mean, but if Morton would stand behind the decisions of the sanitary district, which we think is improper, and that we're confident that we're going to overcome that. And again, I do a lot in federal court, I do a lot in state court, and I have a high success record in terms of my outcomes and decisions. You know, we're pretty confident on that. I really don't want to have to sue the village of Morton. I mean, you know, and again, but if Morton would stand by the decision that's really, you know, in a sense, as it relates to Morton, it's kind of hearsay, you know, on that, then, you know, we wouldn't have any alternative but to advise our client that that's what we have to do as well. Obviously, we then would have another lawsuit. But, and I'm not saying that to threaten it. I'm saying it that, hey, if you just wait till this case is over, I mean, then you would have a legitimate basis if it was adverse to our side, which we don't believe it's going to be.
Joe, may you? Does your client have an East Peoria license?
Yeah. Yes.
Does it have any other municipality license?
It's, I mean, he does work.
I do, he does work all over the state of Illinois.
Yeah, I mean, in the Bloomington area, in the Champaign area, I mean, they've done work all over central Illinois, I would say.
Has he been turned down?
Not by anybody else at all. No, not by anybody else. And, you know, so.
Not that you're aware of, or no?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay.
And I believe we're the only attorney that does work for him, so I'm sure that it would have been brought to our attention. But, I mean, we've actually appealed, occurred before, you know, a community in the Quad Cities area, and they do a lot of work over there. And they have no complaints or whatever, you know, about their work there either. I mean, so, you know, they do work all over, I would say, the central part of Illinois, meaning from like Champaign to Springfield to the Quad Cities to Bloomington to Peoria.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, if you guys want to.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Just kind of procedural advice from the board. Walters Water Works applied for and was denied a license. They've already been denied by the villager role, this is essentially as an appellate body to decide whether Craig got it wrong when he denied them the license. He had a conflict so he couldn't be here tonight. As I mentioned, Todd and Kevin from Wastewater are here as well, I believe, both to be informed on, and having had contact with Craig and being a part of this decision-making process. If you desire to seek input from them, you're welcome to. If you do, I'd have whoever you want to talk to approach the podium otherwise. You know, now is your opportunity for debate and discussion. What we would work towards is a written decision. And I'll help you through that process if, once we're ready for that.
I do have a question for one of them. I don't know if it would be Todd or Scott.
Why don't you both just come up to the podium, you'll ask the question, one of you can answer.
Is it sewer related, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I believe it's sewer related.
Go ahead, let's go ahead with.
Make sure whoever answers a question is close enough to the microphone so we can.
I don't know if it was a year or two years ago, and I believe it was in Woodlawn, there was some sewer work being done. And it, there was a great big hole in the yard. And it damaged the sewer as well to the neighbor, the next door neighbor.
That's correct.
There was damage that was sustained to the concrete driveway over this. There was a ladder. It was an unsafe work condition. And I, like I said, I believe it was in Woodlawn, possibly Sycamore.
Yeah, it was two ten Beverly in Woodlawn.
Okay. And I believe that the name that I heard, it was Mr. Ruder Plunkett.
Correct.
Am I correct on all that?
Yes, you are.
And a sewer person excavator came in and did service work for that to repair.
Correct.
And sort of held out because there was some mounting cost that were being.
Yeah, mounting cost and duration, like two to three weeks for the job.
And this other party came in, sort of, across.
Correct, and remedied the situation, yes.
So that would be at least one time where, and I don't know what kind of formal complaints were done, but I do know that I went and viewed that site.
Yeah.
They were digging about nine o'clock at night. I stopped by.
There was an everything.
Yeah. One person, one person, very deep hole.
Yeah.
And the hole went into the neighbor's yard.
So is this an ongoing problem such as that that you're aware of, or is that a one-time thing?
There was another excavated on the left side of the house. It was in the morning excavating there. And the sewer ended up being in the middle of the house. And they dug in the wrong location. And when they televised it, they were able to find that there's nothing wrong, that they didn't have to dig. And as far as I know, there's never a repair done by any company at that house.
Did you say there was never a repair?
Outside of the house. I don't know what homeowner was told, Mr. Ruder spent, this was in December of last year, they spent the morning digging in the wrong location. And then there's an outside cleanup that they televised that showed the sewer was functional.
So is there more? I mean, is this an ongoing thing, or is this two situations?
There's been other businesses where they recommend work for homeowners that doesn't necessarily have to be done.
So if somebody wanted us to call to repair somebody's sewer, like Mr. Ruder, do they ever contact the village and ask us to televise, you know, to check it on camera? Or do they ask us to look at our videos that we already have so that we can tell them from what we see, what's wrong, or if it's okay?
So a few years ago, we were, we purchased a truck that has a lateral camera. So now we have the ability to go down the vein, shoot up towards someone's house. A lot of times when your sewer's backed up, and you try to camera it inside, you're underwater, you can't see anything.
Yeah.
So we have the advantage that we can come from the street and find the blockage, find the roots, find the broken pipe, and locate it, tell the homeowner where it is, or the contractor, and be like, this is, this is as far as we got on issue here. There may be more problems, but this is as far as we can get. We always try to tell people to get second opinions once, once they start getting thousands of dollars in repairs.
So, counsel. So any, before we talk about next steps, anybody have any other questions for Kevin, Todd, or Scott?
Scott, do you have any comment?
I have a question with you.
Okay.
Absence of other questions, I suggest these gentlemen can sit down and we can talk through your next steps. So just clarifying, and I know this information that was successful to the board, but just clarifying kind of where we stand, probably repeating something I've already said, but a application was filed, decision was made pursuant to section eight dash three dash four point one of the village code by the Director of Public Works. And that decision was to deny a license. Eight dash three dash four point one C six provides that the Director of Public Works or his designee may deny an application for a sewer contractor's license upon a finding that the applicant has had its license suspended, revoked, canceled, or denied by any municipality or municipal corporation within the state of Illinois. So that was the basis upon which the denial was made and communicated to Mr. Ruder. You are the appellate board, so your job is to decide whether to overturn that decision. Customarily, there'd be a set of findings that would be made, and then a decision made on the appeal. So I would suggest, unless there's more questions, that you've reached the point where the public hearing portion is over, where receiving testimony or position statements from the appellant or village employees has concluded, and that would be your time to debate the action you wish to take. I have prepared some proposed findings. And findings essentially are facts that level set to where you are. And then I have a couple of different versions I can provide for you of what a determination would be. But I would suggest it'd be easier to walk through that with you if I had an understanding of what the rule of the court was.
Any comments?
Can I ask, like, counsel?
Yeah.
Like, just, I don't know the law, I don't know the laws, procedure, obviously, but the municipal code, standing on number six alone, are we, are we standing strong legally that we can deny a license based on just six?
Yes.
And in the threat of lawsuit, is there anything that we would need to be aware of by denying the license again?
Litigation happens. It's, it's the place where differing opinions on the law or the application of facts of the law can be resolved by a judge. Litigation isn't something to fear necessarily. Litigation happens. And, you know, I'm confident in the equity of our position. This is an ordinance that's been revisited in the relatively recent past in an ordinance I worked on drafting. It's also not uncommon, it's actually relatively common standard of municipal licensing to provide that a base of being denied a license is that you've had your license revoked, canceled, denied by another jurisdiction. For example, if you have a liquor license and your liquor license is revoked at your bar in Pekin, that can be a basis for Morton to also revoke your liquor license. So it's, it's not unusual that there to be cross provisions that allow for a license to be denied or taken away on a basis of denial by another jurisdiction. So.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Is, is this complaints from people within the village?
Is, is this complaints from people within the village of Morton that had work done? Like I had them come to my house and is this a conglomeration of lots of complaints or is this what we see from administrative point of view that they're messing with things that tie into our sewer lines that we're not comfortable with maintaining, things that are in conjunction with our?
So I'll give you a two-part answer to the question. The first part probably won't be fulfilling answer, but essentially as an appellate board, your job's to evaluate what's come before you. And while I have perspective from my professional dealings providing legal support to the village, I can't share that with you because then I'd become testifying witness. I would offer just as a procedural matter that this is a first of its kind hearing for this board. And so that, you know, this isn't a frequent occurrence that we end up in this position. But I can't speak, I can't-
But I didn't ask you that personally, but, I mean, I'm trying to, and there are businesses that do some part of work. I just, anyway.
So from my perspective, I would prefer that we deny them getting a license again from Morton to uphold what Craig is from my perspective.
I'd agree with Steve. Now, if they deny and they get this solved by the Peoria Sanitation District, could they come back and reapply again? Is that possible?
Yeah.
It'd be my opinion to allow that to work out. Let them, if they get a positive decision from Peoria, come back and see us and we'll relook at it. I know that's not what counsel. I don't think they agree with that, but that's what I would like to do.
I would also like to deny.
Okay. Having heard from a seeming majority of the board, I'm going to walk you through the draft determination that I prepared in anticipation of the hearing. Just because I wrote it as a draft, doesn't mean that you're required to accept any of this verbatim. But the findings that I've labeled or itemized out in your determination is first that Mr. Ruder engages is in the business of construction alteration and repair of sanitary sewer connections, such work requiring a sewer contractor's license under section 834.1A of our code. That Mr. Ruder held a license, performed similar work with Greater Peoria Sanitary District under Greater Peoria Sanitary District Ordinance 581. That Greater Peoria Sanitary District is an Illinois municipal corporation established to create and manage sanitation and provide for sewage disposal. That Mr. Ruder's license with GPSD was revoked by GPSD and remains revoked. And that Village Morton denied Mr. Ruder's sewer contractor's license based on the above information on June 20th, 2025. Those are all intended to be statements of fact that are, that are reflected by the evidence that, in testimony that came before you today. Does any, do any trustees have any concerns or objections to those findings that I just said? Second parts, it gets into the decision and the determination on the appeal that, and the determination would be that Greater Peoria Sanitary District revoked, canceled Mr. Ruder's license, performed work on sewer and sewage systems. That Mr. Ruder's sewer contractor license with Morton may permit 2020 folk to under, or deny that this determination is 4.1C determination by the village without further administrative appeal. Any requested revisions to those two points?
No.
No. I would suggest it would be appropriate, the motion to be made and seconded to adopt that determination, which I just read on the record.
So the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 4th, 2025, and the approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
Second that.
Any questions? Call the rule.
Bluner?
Yes.
Cerley?
Yes.
Hillier?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Parrick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yep. And legal counsel asked me to go back. And is there anybody like to make a public comment?
Thank you.
All right. Village President, we have one resolution tonight.
That would be Resolution 15-26, which is a resolution approving the naming of village property at 225 East Jefferson.
Approval of Resolution 15-26.
This resolution, Village, I believe previously-
Yes, Cerley. Motion passed.
That's all I have tonight. Village Clerk?
I just one quick note. Because of Labor Day, the next meeting will be Tuesday, September 2nd.
Thank you.
Same time, same place.
Village Administrator?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. I have a request for the property, 612 to 620 West Jackson. They've applied for project cost of $24,775 and the recommended grant would be $10,000. And the purpose of the grant would be to refurbish the exterior facade of the building.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve $10,000 grant.
I can tell by Pat's face, he's trying to figure out where this is. This is across the street from the Amoco Station, had the Mr. and Mrs. something or other furniture store in the lower level, has apartments in the upper level.
I own a group was in that.
I own a group was there.
For many years.
Twenty.
Really?
Yep, that's it.
Well, I think it's one that deserves a new canopy. It's one of those tired buildings.
Good night, Your Honor.
You know, and zoning and coding.
Looking good, Your Honor.
Phillips Trustees, anybody have anything?
Yes. Thank you, guys, for coming in tonight. We appreciate it.
And if not, I can have a motion for adjournment.